Alex assures me that everything works on the audio and the video.
He can hear us and we can hear him. Is there a, anybody?
Okay, hung up.
I know.
Yeah, that's only.
Please, Mr. Tassley was coming tonight since we're having utilities. You didn't chase her away too bad, did you?
Yeah, now Erica did immediately send her an apology. I followed with another apology an hour afterwards.
Okay.
Well, remember, but hopefully should forgive.
Does the commission itself need to?
No. On staff.
We, none of us were near the button.
And you know our names.
Okay, nobody here from public. Is it time? Yep.
It is.
Okay, all right, we're live. Welcome, everybody, to City of Temwaters Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, at seven o'clock, and our meeting is called to order. Start with roll call. Commissioner Edwards is excused. Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Here.
Mr. Stav?
Here.
Vice Chair Tobias?
Here.
Great, Commissioner Varela?
Here.
Great, and me, Commissioner Robbins. We're all here, quorum, and we're ready to go. Are there any changes to our agenda tonight from anybody?
Can we switch seven and eight?
Sure.
Alex can go first.
Sure, conservation for public purposes and utilities?
Yeah.
Remind me when we get there in case I screw up. Okay, that sounds good. We'll get Alex out of here. Okay, everybody amenable. Any commissioners' reports? Managers' reports, Brad?
Let's see, we are crossing fingers, having a second interview for a planner on Friday. That goes well. Erica sends her regret, she's out sick today. Other excitement, the housing open house is still open online, we're going to keep that open. We need to double check on how many people have responded to that and also fill out the survey on that. I'll be able to report on that next meeting. Next meeting will be a joint session with the city council, will be starting at six o'clock. We'll be in the council chambers for one hour and then we'll come through one item and then be done. So it'll be an interactive affair, so I expect you to loungewear, whatever, whatever you're comfortable in clothing-wise, because there's going to be wrestling and fighting.
Okay.
Engagement is what we're looking for.
True activity.
True activity.
Okay.
Twenty fifth?
Yes.
All right, let's go on. Did you want to say anything about our schedules that have come up? I appreciate the details.
Just to let you know that I've been also adding that to the project website, the most current version you'll find under Public Engagement and Project Schedule. So that's also online.
Do we have anybody from the public? Looks like we have Mr. Tonio in charge. If he'd like to address the planning commission, Mr. Tonio, this would be your time.
Hello, good evening. I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks for being here. Anybody else, Brad, or did you hear from anybody and by other means?
No.
All right, let's go to erstwhile eight, now seven, the plan periodic update on conservation. Alex.
Perfect. Hi, everybody. Good evening. Thank you for providing feedback on the conservation elements, goals, policies, and actions. So in the packet for tonight's meeting, we provided updated wording for some of the items based on feedback received by staff and the planning commission. Our plan for tonight's meeting is to go down the list of goals, policies, and actions to discuss any of the proposed language. If there are any additional thoughts you'd like to add at this point. I've highlighted items that have changed between the meetings, so we can go down individually for the ones that have changed. I'm also open to other ideas that the planning commission has if you'd like to go about this a different way. As Brad mentioned in the last meeting, this will not be the last opportunity to provide feedback as we plan to come back to you in October with the draft element, which will include these goals, policies, and actions, possibly in a slightly different wording even then than we have now based on the work that we do between now and then. So I'd like to open it up and I can share my screen to go over the ones that I've highlighted, or we can talk through these however you'd prefer.
It might be easiest to start by sharing your screen, Alex.
Yes, I'm getting there now. Can you all see this okay?
It's a little small, but I don't know if we've.
I don't think I can.
Got mine in front of me, so that's probably all right.
I can zoom in so we can at least see. Oh, go ahead.
I have a spare, if anybody, wait.
Somebody wants my copy.
Probably. I have a spare conservation one. And also the utility.
Conservation one.
All right. One head, Alex.
Okay, great. So C1, we've had a change in the initial language to our current language, but the initial language was, use best available science when developing and implementing environmental management policies and regulations. And our current version says, recognize the significant role played by natural features and systems in determining the overall environmental quality and livability of urban life. I'll let that sink in for a second, and if we have any comments or questions on that, happy to discuss.
Hi. I'm wondering how well that term, best available science, I know it's pretty well defined and used a lot in government circles, but how well do you think that will play, you know, with just public, general, you know, ordinary people picking this up? And, you know, will it be salient if we talk about things in those terms rather than?
It will probably be one of the things, I think, we're still obviously working on the final format for the document, but I would like to have commonly used things to be readily defined, either online on the web link or paper version. Most of it's going to be on the web, but I think at that point, we can always provide an explanation of what best available science actually means and where it's defined in the RCWs. So, because it does have a very particular meaning that we have to follow.
That might, that might suffice. I'm just, it seems kind of, and since I know we're trying to strengthen and become more active voice and that kind of thing.
This is an instance where I think we have to use the term, because it is something, number one, that the state's going to be looking for us to use as part of our required elements, but it's also a very commonly used thing throughout the plan. So I think if we provide the, with the definition initially and/or, you know, references to what it actually means, I think that will be a help. Will you also have a glossary attack? Go ahead.
I was just going to echo what you were saying, Brad, in that it is a requirement within the checklist for the the critical area checklist to show how we, you know, are using the best available science. So this is one of the ways, I guess, that we can show that.
By just declaring that you are using it? Okay.
This is a fairly limited thing that we'll be doing, I mean, in terms of phraseology, but this is something that I think we need to keep.
Okay.
Any other comment on the goal C1?
For best available science, is that something that the public could go and look up, what, so they can look exactly what is the current 2024? And then let's say, how often is that updated?
It depends. Because the critical areas cover so much, you know, everything, say, from wetlands to habitat to, you know, geologically hazardous areas, there's current best available published science for each of those elements. So, for example, on habitat, WFW will provide us with, here's the current list of all the updated things by species, by county. So it's, it's not like, go to this one spot, find it all. But what we have done in the past is try to provide links to where to find the information as part of, you know, go to this DNR website to find this, go to this to find this information on wetlands from ecology, go to this spot. So I think that's probably what we'll be doing.
Yeah. What's the update cadence on?
Depends on the agency and the type of thing that they're doing. Sometimes, like for wetlands, it's a fairly almost three or four year update cycle, because it's such a, everybody sees it, does it kind of thing. On the habitat stuff, it really can be anywhere from five to 10 years, depending upon the species and
Thank you.
information that they have. They may not have new information, so that's another thing to keep in mind.
That's helpful, that plan to run.
I guess I would say that, from my point of view, I'm still kind of, I, I am absolutely in favor of using best available science to get that out. But to, but to lead this section with a kind of a procedural detail, a procedural activity, seems like we're kind of sidestepping what our, you know, maybe our overarching goal might be. So I'm wondering if we can say it, but does it have to be first? Are there other procedural kinds of things? This is how we're going to be conducting city business, city activities, and put those in a, in a, in a different section than the goals and objectives that we're truly aiming for in the, in this section. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay.
It's something we can certainly look at. What I'm, what I think is important is to, if we need to explain a term in more detail to the public so they feel that's understandable, because it's such a key component to the state requirements, and I, it's why we put it as, as a very important goal. I think if we do more explanation of what it is, provide more background, then I think it makes more sense to people. But I'm not necessarily in favor of pushing it down. The policies and the implementation things will be focused on particular things that are part of that best available science, where to go, where we're going to get the information from, what we're going to be consulting and all that. So I'd like to leave the detail for the implementation actions and the, and the policy level and keep that broad goal.
Okay.
And provide more information, obviously, on what that is, but it's, it's, looks like same growth management act. It's up, it's that level, but we're not talking throughout the document, having more than four or five terms like that, I think. Best available science is just one of those top five.
Okay, I can move on to C1 dot one, if everyone's ready to move to the next one. Okay, so our current, oh, go ahead.
Hold on a second. Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
You on one dot one?
Yeah.
It, it bothers me when I have to take my breath twice in the process of reading a policy. I mean, is this standard bureaucratic work today that things have to be this long and this complicated?
You mean after staff says, we're not going to do it this way, but we did it anyway?
No.
So, yes, we can definitely word smith, whatever we need.
There are awful lot of them in here. We just go on and on and on.
That's one sentence.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know. The bad thing is, when I, when I make a comment, I like to have a solution. I don't have a solution. But it just seems like some people aren't going to bother to read the whole thing if it's that long.
Okay, so adding some brevity or maybe breaking these up into different policies potentially?
Yeah, I think that would, you know, if, if, if the whole thing is important, then maybe it can be broken up into more than just one policy. I was coached at the last meeting that we don't necessarily need an action for every goal. So it's okay to have more goals. So I'd prefer to have more, more goals without actions than to have a goal that takes up a third of a page.
You're also probably going to suggest the fact that we doubled the size of the original one is going contrary to. No, I, I think Alex, just looking at, I take the blame for this one, because they helped put this one together. I definitely think we could probably break it into four or five different things. We have one concept at the very end that we're trying to deal with, and then we have the individual critical areas themselves that we could deal with. I think your suggestion is perfectly good and makes perfect sense to me, given the direction that we gave you, that we didn't follow. But any, any other instances of, I'm more than happy to make changes.
In between one is 6.4 point one, or at least the statement. The statement is brief, and then there are subsets to it. I think if you, if you need to have it all there, maybe that approach would be better than just saying, like the one right above it. But one, it just goes on. I can deal with, along with the bullets, because I can take breath, think about what I've read, and then go on and look, look at the next piece. And it's all in one paragraph. I feel like I have to read the whole paragraph before I understand what's happened.
That's a great point, and we can definitely do that where it makes the most sense or break them out. We'll go back up to the top for a moment. Any other comment?
Terry, a very quick question?
Oh, go ahead.
I just had a question for Terry. When you wrote no action, it wasn't clear exactly what you meant by that.
Well, first place, I misread the instructions. The instruction said that the planning commission should look at the format. I did, I, I thought that I was supposed to look at this and put something in the planning commission notes. But so I, I addressed each one.
Okay.
And my basic statement was that, what good is a policy without a proposed action? So I just highlighted, as I went through here, the policies that I saw where there was no action. But if you remember in the email that I sent you, I fully understand that we aren't staffed well enough to actually pursue an action for every policy. So that's, that I think is the reason why we don't necessarily have to have an action for every policy. Yet the ones that we have important actions to do, we pursue those, and then if we have more time later on, the next time we update this, we can come up with an action for a different policy.
Is this something where you could break it down into a word that is readily used, like available science? Shorten that up so you can go and look up that definition somewhere else. So here, it's like a critical offer, and you can cut out a lot of that language. Is that something that's possible? You can go back and look at reference material if you have questions, what specifically that entails.
Yeah. I think in this particular case, I think it would work best to do a bulleted list of the critical areas that are identified for protection as part of this, and obviously that'll reduce the strain of trying to read one sentence. Because I think each of these are things that we'll, we have to deal with as part of this, and I think it's important to call those out, and we can do that.
Yeah.
To me, the, the current goal language for C dash one is the more general statement about what C 1.1 is trying to say, recognizing the importance of all these things. And that it's of value to us to conserve them. That is to say, I rather like that language, this little briefer.
What we could do is consider the old language that for C1 and use the policy language we state for C 1.2 to deal with best available science, but move that up ahead. Perhaps. C 1.1, we'll, we'll, we'll figure that out, but I do understand that. I think the, the issue I had when I first looked at the goal C1 is, it's really fuzzy in my, in my mind, recognizing that the significant role and stuff. I guess if we could tighten that and make it a little more.
I agree. I would love to see more specificity or that it is, you know, a lot stronger in language.
Something along the lines of, that, that critical areas playing a central role in the health of the community, kind of.
Exactly, yeah. You know, that's, that's our big, I would imagine, for this element. That's our, you know, kind of our overarching goal. And, and to acknowledge that we have, that we, that we understand that that's pretty darn important is like step one.
We'll word smith that.
Out of curiosity, I don't want to belabor the point too much. When we're developing the goals, do these goals give it to us or do they generate from our, our level of?
This, actually, this was generated first by the previous update processes. Either they were part of the original conference plan that was developed as part of the community process, and it went through that, that process, and then it may have been updated further in 2016. So this is probably the third go at this.
Really quick, the second part of that is, with those goals, did they have a specific format or metric they were using to establish that goal that we've mirrored? So was it?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
There, there wasn't a waiting saying that if it's number one, it's more important than number two.
Or is it a simple, like, SMART format, right, so the goal should be specific, measurable, actionable, you know, reasonable and time-bound, and then that helps you make it more concise and it is more focused? But if they didn't do that on the front and were, were building from it, I understand that maybe some.
Yeah, I think the intent as part of this process is to use the SMART process, definitely, to create more actionable policies and implementation actions out of this stuff. I think that the general thought behind these policies and goals is still probably valid.
Absolutely.
Probably needs to be expressed in a better way. I take mine.
Right.
Okay, we can move down to C1 dot two, if you'd like.
Sure.
This one we did shorten a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
So when we use the term environmentally sensitive areas, is that a definition from the city, from the state, or from like federal environmental authorities, or is that just more of a, a broad catch-all term for any, any area that, you know, we recently think could be sensitive to environmental changes?
We could use.
The intent is to tie it.
Sorry. No, I was just going to say we could use critical areas there, but go ahead.
No, I, I agree with Alex. What, it is intended to be something that is defined that we have to protect. Not, it's a good idea or, you know, it would be nice if it's called out as we protect these.
Well, to that point, is there a way to highlight all these terms or words in this? So that's a clickable hyperlink to it?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking when we talked about the best available science, the fact it would be a hyperlink with this stuff up of.
And every, all of these will have that same type of language, so somebody's like, oh, I wonder what this means? Simple to see and call out.
Yeah, that would be the intent. Now, what I don't want is an entire hyperlink document with, you know.
Everything hyperlink.
So we'll, we'll try to strike a balance.
I think this is a particularly good one, because it's the first time we've started talking about enhancing the environment, which is one of the things that the new legislation has asked us to do that isn't in the old one. So it's, it's good that we've got it right up at the front.
And I think that also calls attention to the fact that we have to look for more opportunities to talk about what we mean by enhance as implementation action. So that's, note that that's additional work that we need to do.
Okay.
All right, the next one I had highlighted was down at 1.5, but I can take a moment if anyone wants to look at any of the other items in between.
On C 1.3, protect the ecological integrity of the natural environment while allowing for compatible growth and development. That still seems fairly unspecific. That, is there a way to be a little more specific there? Or is there, or is there, is this there to distinguish it from the other critical areas or environmental sensitive areas? Is this, is this a standalone? Can it be a little more specific? What it applies to, circumstances where this would come up, or something like that?
Well, the comment is here, and the staff notes that we're going to develop a definition of ecosystem integrity, so. If you've seen that, really can't.
True.
Answer that question. And is that, is there, are we going to have to come up with our own definition, or is there a boilerplate out there?
I'm not aware of a boilerplate out there. I just want to make sure that we use that phrase when we find them.
Or alternatively, is there an already accepted term that is what we will mean anyway? For example, ecological values or functions, the, the value of having an ecosystem intact or working. I don't know if that's what we mean there, but if there's already a term.
From my perspective, I, I didn't have a readily available alternative, and it was more of a note that we need to do more work to figure out what actually we could do.
Okay, should we move down to 1.5?
Yes.
Okay. So that one, the updated version is use studies and plans, such as the most recent version of the adopted natural hazards mitigation plan for Thurston County, Tom Water Urban Forestry Management Plan, and Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan to inform policy and regulation development and implementation.
Terry, you had a note about updating and expanding related regulations.
Oh, I just wondered if. If we were gonna do this, if we needed to, as an action, expand any existing regulations to make sure that a policy was, rather than maybe just being here, was also reflected in cities' offices. Okay, if you're going to do this, you're gonna do this in accordance with. Maybe it already is.
I think this is probably a good spot for three separate action implementation actions. I think it would help. Because I think more, it's more, in these cases, fortunately, it's implementing the actions already identified in the plans, essentially, through the regulations, and just calling that out, the fact that we've already gone through that process. We have our lists, we have all those other things, so just point then in that direction, I think. But I think they're distinct things, and I would like to call them out separately.
Okay, the next one I have on my list is C-2. Promote conservation of natural resources and the protection of the environment in cooperation with residents, businesses, or schools, affected jurisdictions, and tribes. No comments on that one?
It nods, so yeah.
Okay. And then C-2 dot 1, support education programs in the community that outline the need for natural resource conservation and protection of critical areas, and look to create opportunity for community action.
Commissioner Veron.
The last line, look to create opportunity, look to create opportunity, it seems kinda, I don't know, vaguely non-committal, you know, you know, like forming a committee to explore an option, you know? Maybe if we want, you know, echoing what we were saying earlier about, you know, direct action-oriented language, you know, maybe.
It may work best if we just get to rid of the look to portion and just say, create opportunity for community action.
Yeah.
I think that needs to be taken.
Yeah. It's not necessarily creating kind of like this, this, this action, but to say like we are going to create opportunity.
Commissioner Veron.
For supporting education programs, is there any funds allocated towards that, or is there, it will be okay?
Yeah, so for example, water quality and stormwater, there is a lot of funding available for that. The money that's paid by residents towards stormwater is also, the portion goes to education. Problems by letting people know it's not a good idea, let's do something else.
And that money is focused on those initiatives, right? So it's not just a pot of money that's used for.
It's a stormwater fund, and the uses are very prescribed. So in some cases, especially dealing with water quality and other stuff, you'll see a lot of action, and the fact is our water resources staff developed a lot of these because a lot of their programs are already paid for that. In some cases, you'll notice we don't have a lot of those because we don't necessarily have the programs or the funding sources to do that. So this is a case of, we've got it, let's put it to good use, kind of thing.
And the water resource team takes this on, and they're the ones that are engaging with the community and looking for community action.
Exactly. So the stream team, for example, is a volunteer organization that's been very active within the community, has been for a long time, doing that kind of thing. The green team is the internal city organization that's across all the different departments looking for ways to improve city operations. The water conservation messaging thing falls into the whole line of water resources to begin with because limited, since we're the water utility, we know how much water we have and don't have, and how important conservation is as part of that. So those kinds of things play into that.
And the implementation actions do reflect a lot of those different items?
Alex, before you go too much farther on 2.1.3 and 2.1.4, could those be combined?
I think they're two distinct things, and trying to get also two different goals. Water conservation in the sense of, you know, not using up our aquifers is one thing. Water quality really speaks more to rivers and streams and what we send into rivers and streams, say, through stormwater, and it plays a lot bigger role in dealing with, say, salmon and other.
Okay.
Projected species, so that's the distinction.
Okay.
And the difference between those two.
Get an explanation. Okay.
All right. I don't have any highlighted under C dot, or C-3 dot 1, so if anyone has anything they wanted to bring up before I scroll past.
So for example, another phrase that we should define as low impact development has a very specific meaning when we're dealing with stormwater, so we'll include those kinds of things.
All right, I'm gonna scroll, continue scrolling down until I get to my next highlighted item. I meant C-4 dot 2.
Can you go past C? Okay.
Sorry, what was that?
This is one of the, I was gonna say on C-4.
Okay.
This is one of those ones where it would be helpful to know what enhance, the word enhance here means, especially if it's used differently than other places. Does enhance mean reconstruct something? Does it mean benign neglect? Does it mean what? You know, so, and it might, and it might be that it's particular to this item on drainage systems, natural drainage systems, to mean something very different than, in a different context.
No, I think it's an active thing, it's not a benign. The way the state regulations up until a couple of years ago protect was do your best just to not do anything in it, set it aside, if you're lucky, maybe remember to do some, you know, weeding in the buffer, that kind of thing. Enhance means take it to the next level, meaning, you know, not only just set it aside, but what can you do to enhance the quality of those things? So does that mean stricter controls on the water that's going into a wetland, for example? Does that mean enhanced plantings over time? Does that mean introducing new species? You know, those kinds of, that's enhancement in my mind.
I think probably the difficulty here is the fact that you've got enhance and natural followed, you know, together. I mean, once you've enhanced it, it's no longer natural.
Right.
So how do you enhance something that's natural?
And keep it natural.
And keep it natural.
I will ask Alissa, she's our sustainability coordinator, and she wrote that, but I think I know where she's going with it.
Yeah. I didn't until you started talking about it.
I, the other thing is I don't think there are any natural drainage systems anymore in the city. They've all been messed with, I think is the proper scientific term. So anything that we do to enhance, I think the difference here is natural drainage systems would be rivers or creeks versus a ditch or a built stormwater system. I think that's the difference. Now, natural by itself doesn't mean it's never been touched, but that doesn't exist anymore. So I think it works.
But it doesn't necessarily mean, you know, like wholesale terraforming kind of activities?
No.
Directing a river.
No, no, we've.
Damming a river.
The Black Lake output.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. We have, we do have secret plans to do similar things, but we're, again, they're secret plans, and we'll tell you about them later.
One thing that.
Other kinds of things?
Sorry.
Just real quickly, are there other kinds than rivers and creeks that would qualify as natural drainage system?
Wetlands, lakes.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm, in terms of drainage, we don't have any potholes that I'm aware of, so everything I think would be.
Okay.
So somewhere.
To actively be draining rather than holding the way a wetland.
Yeah, no, I, even, even if it's an isolated wetland, it is going probably into the aquifer ultimately.
Okay, so, okay. So anything that's not in a man-made conduit? All right.
Alex, I'm sorry I interrupted you.
Go ahead.
No, no problem. Stream restoration projects are, you know, one thing, or maybe, you know, removal of beaver dams or other items that would allow for the natural flow to occur. I think those are some things that water resources is working on. So I can move down to 4 dot 2, unless there are any other items on 4 dot 1 they'd like to discuss?
I think we're, I think we're good.
Okay. I developed conservation or protection measure. Oh, go ahead.
Back on 4 to the staff note about the differences between, I wanna say, competing habitats, what works for, say, the salmon, a free-flowing creek or whatever, doesn't necessarily work for the spotted frog, so just be aware that, you know, those kinds of conflicts do exist.
So do you expect when you have a action item under staff notes, it's just something that's still.
It's something we need to figure out how to handle. Yeah, because we're working on it right now in our habitat conservation plan, it would beaver dams and the potential impact on habitat for the frog versus a beaver dam flooding somebody's backyard, kind of thing. So we just have to figure out how we're gonna do that.
Does this one include beyond developing what the measures might be, actually implementing them? And can we say that? Develop and implement?
Wouldn't the develop be the policy and the implement be the action?
Exactly.
So adding an implementation action underneath that relates to implementing.
Have we, we don't, we haven't had policies in this area before, really?
Looks like this one was.
I think what we were attempting to do is we started with the broad, extremely broad picture of we need to protect critical areas. Then we started to focus in more on protecting water and water quality, protecting air quality, and those kinds of things, and then we get into very specific things dealing with the state critical areas. So protect wetlands, and this is what that means, and protect geologically hazardous areas. But the intent is to sort of, I wanna say, there's a host of measures that go beyond just critical area protection that sort of feed into all of this, that really we didn't touch on previously. All the stormwater, you know, and aquifer recharge and the air quality things that are mentioned now are things I think are important. Not all of them are things that we do, but we do a lot of coordination on, so.
Yeah, if we're, if we're, how do I wanna say, kind of new to the game, for sure, I would, I guess I would be surprised if we hadn't been doing something all these many years.
Yeah, well, I think we have, and we just didn't really spell it out on our policies.
Yeah, okay.
We kind of, we were very focused on what our conservation policies dealt with, and we probably didn't expand a little bit into that middle round that I think we need to, because we have so many different programs that we do. It's not changing necessarily what we're doing, it's just recognizing it and sort of putting it in its own level of importance.
Is that true of other kinds of things in the mix here, where we maybe have, we as a city have been, you know, taking actions or doing whatever kinds of things that are conservation-minded, or, you know, all that kind of stuff, but we just didn't articulate it?
Well, for example, the climate action plan, everything dealing with that. That in itself is a whole new beast, but it does, we have a whole lot of things that we are doing that need to be basically called out and recognized. Same thing with the urban forestry plan, all those things dealing with native vegetation or vegetation preservation, trees and everything else. We started to have some conversations of the importance of that in here, but I think we need to, we need to enhance that a lot more.
It'd be good to get credit for stuff we've been doing right.
That's kind of the purpose also.
Yes.
It also helps people to understand that it's more than just these very specific things, that this is how, in broader terms, and how it affects them.
All righty. All right, Alex, go on ahead.
Yeah, great. So moving down to 4 dot 3, 4 dot 4, 4 dot 5, I do not have anything, but can pause if anyone wants to bring anything up?
I think you added a policy here. Were you forcing like it?
4 dot 5, yes.
That's not the one that was added, I think it was added above there.
4 dot 4.
Yeah, there you go.
We'll make a note of that as a new policy as well.
Okay. Moving down to 4 dot 6, any comments there?
Well, this is where we shift into the specific areas. So first, obviously, is protect streams and lakes, which are their own set of regulations. In part, some of it is dealt with in the shoreline management plan, like the Shute's River, Percival Creek, but a lot of the smaller lakes and creeks aren't covered by that. So this is where we get at that.
By resource industries, you're basically talking about gravel pits, which is the only ones we have.
Yeah, so it deals with gravel pits and if we're identifying any forest resource lands in the city. We had one or two parcels last night, forest resources, and then we had four different spots that were mineral resources, all in the northwest corner.
Okay, we'll move it on to improved air quality. Okay, we'll move it on to improved air quality, which is C dash five. Were there any comments under, uh, C dash five that anyone wanted to bring up?
I'm curious about what you mean by investigate the hazards. Maybe this is kind of like before, this is C five?
Yeah, under wild water, air quality. That, that's, that was a question posed by our, um, sustainability staff that we have not answered, so.
Um, we have some resources, don't we, of, um, I don't know what hazard maps of one kind or another, uh.
Yeah, it, I'm thinking also in terms of a hazard resource, a hazard mitigation plan.
Okay. Where we deal with that kind of thing, wildfires and other sorts of things.
That's where I need, I would suggest we're starting, the, the state is also starting their own. Well, they're not, they're not, they're not dealing with air quality stuff, they're dealing with property. So that's a tough one. I don't have a, an instant answer.
It must be the air quality would, uh, be like, uh, climate, that would be something that would be joined together at the county level and do that process or maybe fund, um, county planning, you know, folks to do. Would seem like a, um, sort of a difficulty for each city to do their own air quality.
Yeah, and I think that's also something that we can deal with as part of the adaptation plan portion of the climate element. As a hazard, you know, more likely caused by.
This, this area in particular might benefit, you know, when we get to this point, um, from a, from a nice little chart that describes, that shows maybe a little pie chart or something that shows the sources of air quality, um, pollutants or other problems, you know, like wildfires or transportation or mining or, or whatever the things are.
Yeah.
So, you know, and help, help people understand that and how big each one of those is contributing to any kind of air quality problems.
Got a comment on five point two. Uh, I would think, uh, acquire appropriate tree and vegetation retention. Because we don't want to, there's that we want to keep all trees and all vegetation, you know, and want to get rid of cottonwoods and.
But Scott's broom is staying. As long as Scott's broom stays, then I'm fine with adding it.
I would suggest that we could put appropriate in there without being accused of softening the, you know, the policy.
Or make reference to the.
Cause there are inappropriate vegetations out there.
Yes.
One more native vegetation as well.
Non-invasive.
Non-invasive.
Native is good, but there may be good, non-native ones too.
That is true.
So, so I'm.
Scott's broom. Brad's favorite though. It's beautiful driving down past, uh, JBLM.
Start a broom making industry. It seems like this would be a good place to refer to the, um, urban forestry plan. Or management plan, I guess it is. Okay.
Would that lead to, uh, a location where people can find appropriate vegetation and trees? Looking for something to plant here, you go, is, here's an encouraged species list.
Yeah, yeah, so for example, uh, we're developing the tree lifts for the city, both street trees and general trees. Uh, and I think we're looking at some similar guidance for landscaping. The problem with landscaping, it's a much broader, uh, than trees. But we're looking at doing that as part of the regulatory.
And for street trees, are you looking at, uh, root zones that impact?
Yes, every, everything from, you know, the, how long they live, what kind of roots do they develop? What kind of issues do they develop with fruits or anything else like that? So we're trying to factor in all those things.
Best planning practices as well?
Yes.
Is biofiltration going to be in the classroom?
We can add it.
Okay, moving down to the rest of, uh, five dot three, any comments there?
Uh, on, on this set of them, um, I'm just wondering, maybe it's a short term effect, but what impact do we, have we seen from increased teleworking over the last few years? And how, and do we see some of that trend of so much teleworking continuing? At least into a good portion of our planning horizon here, I would, I would anticipate. Um, that should do a fair amount to reduce commuting and, and travel by automobile and that kind of thing.
It's something that we'll be taking a look at with our, uh, transportation consultant. The initial things that we've been talking about with them is that, well, in our case, especially with state employers, the PM peaks and so forth are down. But across the board, traffic is up throughout the day. Uh, so not necessarily we're getting less volume and less particulates, it's just being spread out more.
Okay, okay.
But that, that is definitely something.
One more DoorDash too, I imagine.
Yep.
All those Amazon deliveries, yeah.
Midday trips, you know, that kind of thing.
Could be, yeah, this would be, I'm sure there's, it's a data rich kind of a topic area, so we could understand if it did more of them.
Yeah, the, the other thing, pardon, sorry. The other thing is in terms of our ability to correct, I, I'm going to say relevant data, is, is, um, we're, we're, we're kind of stuck because we, we put a pause on, um, traffic data during COVID. Uh, because, you know, we're, let's, let's, let's do traffic studies when nobody's on the road to, you know, erase everything off there. Really only starting in the spring of last year have we really started to, to do that again. So we don't necessarily have a full picture because we just don't have the data yet. Uh, and how we're going to be able to do that, uh, it's going to be interesting, but just be aware that we're kind of, we'll see how it plays out.
Yes, yeah.
Well, and I was, I was wondering, uh, towards advanced technologies like electric vehicles and then potentially hydrogen vehicles and all these other technologies that are out there. Uh, what can be done to encourage people to adopt those technologies that aren't including, not the tailpipe necessarily? Um, and adding more charging stations around to boost that?
I think, I think we're including a lot of that in the climate element.
Okay.
And I, I, you'll see a lot of things being moved, like from the land use element, dealing with electrical things and systems to the climate element. Obviously that all plays together. Uh, but, you know, we're trying to consolidate a lot of that stuff.
Promote for the city to promote, it could be a moneymaker, even at cut rates, so.
All right, are we okay to move down to C dash six?
Yes.
All right, so that, uh, goal category is environmentally sensitive areas and, um, the C dash six is protect streams and lakes. And I had six dot two, uh, highlighted, uh, but happy to talk about any of the items under six.
Yeah, I think C six two is a good example of wanting to be broken down for readability.
Can I slip back to five? Yeah, yeah, you may, you may not like this on Brad, but I suggested a, uh, five point three point three. That was the work with interstate city transit and, uh, bus routes in Tilmore. Yeah, I don't know if this is, uh, a fitting place to put that in, but, uh, you can't get people to stop using their cars unless you give them an alternative. Uh, and if we're going to build, uh, low income housing, especially down in the bottom line area, uh, we're assuming that those people can't afford a car. Few that can afford a car are probably living in it right now. Uh, so, uh, if we're going to actually go with low income housing, we're going to have to have some way for those folks to get to work. We do want them to work. I would say if we, if we put notices to inner city transit in multiple locations, we might have a better chance of getting their attention.
Yeah, I, um, I'm thinking that five three for the most part really belongs more in the transportation plan. At the same time, I think it's okay as part of the, uh, uh, like a new five three to refer to those goals and policies in the transportation plan that reduces all that.
Point in that direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I like how, I mean, it does call to the clean air where, what in that pie chart, how much of that is, um, thrown out there from via, uh, gas emission vehicles and all these other things. It is good to call it out here as well as the transportation, but I agree completely with you. Hope inner city as many as.
No, so it can be bought on, uh, electric, electric vehicle.
They're getting cheap now. Yeah, no, I agree.
So I, I kind of like, and this is something we'll work on, but I think replacing five three with, uh, look for ways to reduce greenhouse gas and gases in line with the transportation plan policies and, and policies of the climate element. Sorry, back at, back to C six.
Okay, besides what Brad mentioned where we could, uh, change the configuration of C dash two, any other comments there?
Looks like we're good.
Okay. Moving down to C three and four. C six dot three and six dot four.
Six dot, dot four, seems to me the first sentence in the policy of six point four is actually an action. Is there a way to just pull that out of the, uh, front end and make it, uh, six point four point? You already got a one, but, uh, some set somewhere?
Yeah, I, I think that the whole thing needs work.
Does that come back to the, the one with the natural drainage?
Yeah, uh, that's a good, that's also a good point.
C four?
Well, this one gets into the banks, which the other one didn't.
Yeah.
You know, which is a key here. I mean, yes, you, yes, you need to work on the channels, but the banks are a whole separate area, which also need to be done and they're an area that we can't get involved in, uh, through, you know, tax benefits or permit benefits or, uh, some, some way or means to get people to, uh, enhance the banks of waterway. But I think, you know, we, we've, we've got a good policy statement, uh, that starts with require, but that first sentence would, would fit fine, drop down as an action.
Great. We discussed, uh, six, uh, four dot one for a moment at the beginning, just as far as the format goes. Um, but I'll keep moving on unless there are questions on that one. All right, so six stuff, uh, yeah, six dot five?
The only change I would recommend or this initial change would be to define what we mean by feasible. Is that technically feasible? Is that financially feasible? There's a lot of things that come into that. I'm sure we do, do that in our stormwater manual, so maybe we need to look at that.
If it means, um, financially feasible, and so that lets out a lot of actions where we don't have the money to do it. Is there's a better term to get at, um, what we, what we mean otherwise?
Well, and I think when we talk about financially feasible, um, there's a gray, there's a gray area there. I mean, if you, if you look at the capital, uh, plan, uh, there's only probably thirty or forty percent of the capital plan that's financially feasible. But the rest of it is all, hey, if we get a grant for this or we get a grant for that. But the fact that you put them in the plan means that if somebody has the time, they're going to go look for the grant. So, uh, I think, I, uh, things that may not look immediately financially feasible still may be feasible if you, um, put them out there and work on them long enough.
Yeah, I think this one.
We're making a new bridge on Henderson someday.
Yeah. I think this is slightly different because I think we're looking at development opportunities, so this is a one-off. You know, I've got a site I'm going to develop, but this way, eh, it's not going to work necessarily. I'm, from my perspective financially, I'd like to do something else. So I, I think it's, it's a little more focused than in the capital facilities side of things.
Maybe if we specifically limit it to, um, the technical side of things, the practicality side of things.
Yeah, and again, what you, what do you mean by practical?
Yeah, well, can, could, can it be implemented?
In six point five point two, under the staff notes, uh, what is a monitoring bond?
You're monitoring comma bonds and other mechanism? I, I think it's two different component, two different things.
Monitoring bonds, those are financial bonds?
Yeah, so the bond would be in place until, say, the plantings work or don't work. It's usually a three to five year period. For, for critical areas, it's a longer term than the typical landscaping bond. But it gives us the ability to pay, make sure that if somebody's going to pay for replanning if they need to, because it didn't work.
And it's especially used in areas where, you know, buffers are disturbed, uh, or, you know, reduced buffers are allowed with mitigation. And that's where the bonds come in place and then monitoring, um, through reports have to take place for years after.
Yeah.
I'm curious about, just sort of in general, uh, I would, I would think this might, there might be some, uh, concern from the, on the point of, um, developers, um, and tying up a lot of money for a lot of years in bonds. Waiting for, you know, whatever to play out, or is that, or have we been doing that for long enough that that's just the name of the game?
This is pretty standard, and especially in cases where they've, they've, they've reduced the buffers. Um, and said, for our product to do this, we need to reduce the buffer and this is what we're going to do to make sure it still maintains its functionality. That is a very common thing. It has been since the nineties. That is a very common thing. It has been since the 90s for us.
Yeah, okay. Nobody's.
They may not like it, but it's, it's, you know, if, if you're gonna do something that, that, that potentially could alter a natural environment permanently, you know, there has to be a mechanism to make sure it works.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And you're not hearing any disagreement. All right, good.
Moving down to C7, which is enhanced wetlands. Oh, we've got 7 dot 1, which I had highlighted. Protect wetlands not as isolated units, but as ecosystems that provide essential services and their functionality within watersheds.
Oh, on C7 dash one, or dot 1, I'd like to maybe suggest protect wetlands not solely as isolated units. So that they're still protected somewhat as isolated units, but also as their part in an ecosystem. I worry that, you know, we would start, you know, give, gives a, I don't wanna say kind of, you know, nibbling away at, well, we don't have to worry about this one because we've got some more over here, or whatever, and we start to lose the individual ones. Mr. 5.
To that end, what about something to the effect of protect wetlands on, on both an individual basis and a wider ecosystem, wider essential ecosystem basis?
Yeah, something on that.
Something like that. The, the, yes, and rather than a, not this, but that.
Yes.
Dropping down to 7.2.1. We dropped the word significant out of the first draft. My question would be why? I, I thought it was, yeah, significant and maybe non-significant. So why, why did we, why did we think it was a good word when we wrote the first draft, but we dropped it out?
That's a good question, because I don't, I wasn't around when they drafted originally. But when I read significant, that, in my mind, there's various categories of wetlands. Four different categories according to the state. One and two are by, you know, the biggest ones by size and habitat value and everything. However, we're, we're called upon as, as a city to set aside and protect all wetlands. We don't, we don't get to call that, that one significant. You know, if it's anything 1 to 4, meets all those criteria, they're a wetland, they should be protected, they should be, in my mind, they should make sure that the regulations are actually enforced, that do that for all wetlands, not just significant wetlands. So that's the reason why I suggest dropping the current significant.
And in that case.
That implies, in my mind, it implies that the only ones of any value are the big ones on the west side of town, south of Trosper, and we, we can ignore every, all the other ones.
And this statement would also include natural wetlands as well as constructed wetlands, mitigation wetlands?
Yeah, and I think for our part, it's almost all natural wetlands may be enhanced with some, you know, additional findings or something. Creation of brand-new wetlands is, hasn't worked.
Yeah.
And it's not something that I'm aware of that we've done recently, so.
I guess my concern is that many of what are classified as, as wetlands by not necessarily best science, but by the general public are areas which maybe only have water to them three months out of the year.
Yeah.
So they're certainly less significant than the wetlands at entrance in the Squawley River.
Yes, at the same time, you could argue species like the spotted frog would prefer those that are only inundated for a portion of the year, because that's where their breeding areas go. They'll go out to the far reaches, lay their egg mass, all that kind of stuff, and then the cycle is, it's, so each of the wetlands have, depending upon if it's always has water in it, or even has a very limited water, all have different ecological values for different species and things like that. So that's what it's more complicated. That's why when we evaluate wetlands, we look at not only presence of water, but hydroric soils and, and other considerations when typing wetlands.
Um, before we move on, I'm just taking note of time, say 15 or so. And I wanna have, you know, adequate time for the rest of this. But I may, I may call for a vote about whether we postpone an item on our agenda or time or whatever in order to get to.
I'm, I'm, from a staff perspective, we're fine with postponing further discussion on the natural.
On the lands for public purposes?
Lands for public purposes, utilities, and focus on conservation.
Okay. We, we run out of time, we, we can decide to do that.
And, and again, that holds true for any of these things that we start. If we, we think we need more time or wanna focus, we're fine with making adjustments.
Okay. All right. Could you go, Alex?
Great, sounds great. So should we move on to 7 dot 2 and 7 dot 3, if there are any discussion items? Okay, and 7 dot 4 is also on this page as well.
Looking at 7.4.1, that seems very vague, as defined by state law. Yeah, that's, that's a big book. Can, can we at least maybe list the RCW?
We can, we can. Reasonable use of property is also a very defined term by state law, so we'll, we'll do both, actually.
What was more specific in the first draft? The addition of defined by state laws goes up in the section.
Moving down to 7.5?
How do we do 7.5.1? Is that something that's in the lower grass floor? How do you actually collect the data to study water level fluctuations at city level?
It is, it is possible, and it is done. What I'm wondering, however, is I'm, the bigger question of us using wetlands for stormwater. Alex, I, I don't think we really do that. Am I off-base there?
So we typically locate stormwater retention ponds or other stormwater features outside of wetlands. However, many times we do release the water from stormwater ponds into wetlands over time as like a timed release, or as part of the natural flow of redirecting water to where water already is, not in large influxes, but in, you know, small amounts. So it's, yeah, it seems like that's what potentially this is talking about, and then, you know, the water monitoring can be done with those stormwater facilities relatively easily.
Do we do that currently, the monitoring side of it?
We do. There are a couple of instances where we have them, especially near aquifer recharge areas or, or wellhead protection areas, to make sure that particulates are able to be measured within those wells, or before they get to the well, so we can identify if there's anything happening that should not be happening, that's getting into the water.
Okay.
On, on the 7.5.1, enforced regulations sound a little redundant. Like, why do you have reg, regulations if you're not gonna enforce them? Trying to think of what we're really trying to say here, or are we, like, stepping up our enforcement? Are we strengthening the regulations that might shock people? What's the, what's the thing going on here?
I'm, I'm wondering if, if, if we really need 7.4.1, because it, it's basically built into, the code is, it is already. It's not a matter of us enforcing it, it's just saying, this is, this is what's allowed under state law, this is what we have.
Right.
And if you go through this process and you have a 10-acre parcel land, absolutely none of it is developable under state law, you are allowed to develop the space for a single-family house. There really isn't a matter of us enforcing the regulations, it's just the policy itself does, I think, what we already do.
Yeah.
Isn't the, as an implementation action, to do anything further. It's not like write additional regulations to allow for this. No, we, we already have that. And we don't, after the fact, you know, enforce. It, it's not like, it's not like a sign code where, you know, we, we say we don't want banner signs of a certain size, but do we actually enforce that?
So what we may really mean is apply the regulations and monitor how they're working?
There's nothing really to monitor, aside from the fact that, I mean, in a sense, we're, we allow it or we don't. Well, we, we don't have a choice. It, we, we have to allow it.
You have a regulation.
And we don't, and we don't have the number of these kinds of cases to basically saying, you know, we did it twice, or, I'd be surprised if we did it once over the past five years, to be honest, because it's a very specialized thing. So I, I guess I question whether or not we need that implementation action.
But I guess for both 7.4.1 and 7.5.1, or if it occurs elsewhere, too.
Well, I think, I think that's a little different, though, because I do, I, I think I, I, I agree with you, looking at the word choice, enforced regulations. But I think monitoring, or using a different word, you know, apply regular monitoring, or whatever we need to say, just make sure that it's doing what we say it should do.
Well, maybe not monitoring, but, yeah, apply the regulations or.
Well, 7.5.1.
Communicate about what the regulations are, or something.
You could just start that with the word ensure. Just drop the first four words.
Yeah.
Say, ensure that water level fluctuations.
You know, per, per regulation or something, but.
You don't even need the word regulation to get, it's known that it's regulated. You can just start out with the word ensure.
And you already know that you're enforcing it.
Yeah, and then we can spell out what we mean by enforce. Do we check out, is here, do we, is there a monitoring regime established by, what's the, whatever? You know.
Yeah.
The original wetland approval, those kinds of things.
All right, should we move on to C dash 8?
Yes.
Great, so we've got the first one, 8 dot 1, protect aquifers, aquifer recharge areas, and wellhead protection areas from contamination. And then if there's any other items for discussion in 8 dot 2?
We're good?
Okay. We can move down to C dash 9, protect geological hazardous areas such as steep slope, landslide erosion, and seismic hazard areas. And 9 dot 1, 9 dot 2, 9 dot 3, any comments on those?
Does, I know in C9 you've called out seismic, but does C9.1 also apply to seismic hazards?
Yes. Yeah, the geological hazardous areas covers the border, and then seismic is one of the categories underneath that.
Okay, so really, the C8, everybody, everything listed under geological hazard, the steep slope, the landslide, the erosion, and the seismic, can be interpreted to apply to everything under there? Do we need to repeat it? Okay.
I don't think so. I think in each of these cases, all of them, you know, maintaining vegetation on soil so you don't lose it, either by erosion or steep slopes or seismic.
Yeah.
For example, that would be something.
We don't need to repeat any of the things in C9 that'll understand to apply.
The, the only thing I have, question is the, is location of C9.3, whether it truly belongs there or somewhere else.
It doesn't seem to really apply there, or to be situated properly there. Unless you're, unless you're saying those are, those areas are particularly vulnerable to geological hazards, and that's why that's there. Is that the case?
Yeah, maybe it's more about being intentional about land use development near those areas and making sure we have proper studies to, to make sure that we're not degradating any of those, you know, slopes.
Yeah.
So maybe what, we should say something like that about, you know, proper site design, taking into account geological hazards, or, yeah, something like that? All right?
Okay, 9 dot 4 and 9 dot 5? Anything on either of those?
For, for 9 dot 5, we say acquire erosion and sedimentation prevention best management practices using those construction projects as defined by who? Is that an industry standard, or is that the construction company standard? Because those may vary, and there may be some differences, or that are already defined?
It, it is, it is actually defined, and it's usually typically part of the stormwater management plan.
Okay.
So we can, we can also just.
Yeah, just tie it in, just clarify.
Oh, it, it's some very explicit.
Hey, we can move on to 9.6 and 9.7?
Okay.
Very detailed.
On 9.6, it talks about minimizing the risk to structural damage, of structural damage and fire and injury to occupants. But it doesn't really talk about, kind of maybe the, the elements we're interested in here in the conservation element, like damage to ecosystems and, and the like. Or am I misreading what this one is about?
No.
Or can, can this one apply to help, can, you know, be directed at the conservation component?
This one is specifically dealing with a, let's see, a critical hazard. I think it's okay to be specific here just to buildings and property and life. Seismic hazard dealing, that's. Seismic hazard dealing, that's an environmental thing, is a different matter.
So, for example, you know, if we, I don't know if this is, if this is a real, a realistic example, but let's say that we have a situation where, um, somebody's got a building, office building, or whatever kind of building. But, you know, for some, one reason or another, you know, something, something fails about it, whether it burned down, or there was whatever event, and it created, um, you know, some sort of contamination getting into a stream bed, or air quality problems, or whatever, whatever the situation is. So what I'm not seeing here is the, is the risk to the, to the environment.
Well, I think, number one, this is focusing on geological hazards.
Yeah.
So, and under geological hazards, we're dealing with seismic hazards. And seismic hazards, for the most part, are the things that we deal with through building code and structural things and geo, geol, uh, geoengineering. So I, I think it's okay the way that we have it here. And, and conservation, again, it takes in a very broad, uh, set of things. And in this particular case, we're dealing with a very specific hazard. Very specific, critical.
Yeah, what, what we're conserving.
Yeah, exactly.
Not necessarily the
We're, we're talking about the effects of something, you know? For example, pardon me, if we're looking at, when we looked at the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and there were instances where, uh, that they had basically built on fill that wasn't adequately impacted and everything else, and then remarkably, that fill moved during an earthquake. This is kind of what we're dealing with here, except we're dealing with the fact that the structures need to be designed in such a way that they account for what they're built on.
Yeah.
So it's not like, one of my favorite examples from Alaska, where they had a perfectly well-designed house, uh, that they had there in 64, that the house tilted over and fell on its side. Structurally, it was still sound.
Yeah.
Uh, but it just didn't account for the fact it was not built in properly.
Do we have maps that show, um, seismic hazard areas within the city?
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, a hazard mitigation plan has, has that information. But there is, you know, there's higher, there, there's definitely soils identified of higher risk for liquefaction, and that's where the P soils come in and other things like that.
Should we move on to C ten?
Yes.
Okay, and that's preserve floodplain? And if there's any discussion on ten dot one, ten dot two, or ten dot three?
Ms. Tobias.
So I, I guess I understand, obviously, why you don't want to build on floodplain, uh, you know, in the event of the flood, it, you know, creates problems for everyone. But also the fact that floodplain is probably going to be sitting empty and not underwater for, uh, the majority of the time. Are there strategic uses for the city, that, that the city can use for floodplains? Say for, uh, environmental offset, uh, like ecological mitigation efforts? Is, is there really like a use for floodplain, other than just as like the buffer zone for our rivers? And if so, what, like, what can we do to utilize floodplain?
Like, make a golf course?
Make a golf.
No, but I, yeah, recreation, I guess, outdoor recreation that doesn't involve structures. Yeah, the, the, the trick with, um, well, number one, the habitat has to work. The fact you don't want to find out species, uh, on a regular basis, or wash them out, or anything like that. But so, there, there needs to be some other things done in order to make sure that works. But really, it's, the, the focus is not putting, putting permanent structures there that could be lost by flood as much as possible. So, for example, Terry's new, um, Henderson Boulevard Bridge, which will stretch from the end, both high points of the, the ridges, and just avoid the valley entirely, and it, we've got some beautiful designs. That's our
Structure, oh, we can.
Five bike lanes.
Well, East Street.
Exactly. Except, except much nicer than East Street.
This, we've just gone through, um, the update to the, um, the FEMA
Yep.
stuff. So we're referring to that over in, um, C ten point five point one.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm going to look at some of the new policy language to see if these things can be shortened. Because again, this sort of, it, it, it goes from policy into regulatory in the same policy. We'll look at that, but the, the general ideas still are good.
Good, Alex?
Yeah, to finish that section up, uh, ten dot six, anything?
But ten dash six appears to be about three different policy. A matter of, you know, coming up with a, ten dash six, seven, and eight.
Yeah, maybe there's a way to either split those, or to bullet those as to not allow, you know, those three different things. Okay, moving down to C eleven, enhance wildlife habitat. We have eleven dot one, which is identify, protect, and enhance fishing wildlife habitat corridors to minimize habitat fragmentation, especially along existing linkages and in patches of native habitat by enhancing vegetation composition and structure, and incorporating indigenous plant species compatible with the site.
I have a question on eleven point four. When we talk about encouraging, you know, it's kind of softer words. If you've got a developer out there and you would like to have a developer put in larger buffer areas, how do you encourage?
I'm wondering that myself.
Tell them to do it. I'm not sure how you can
You can incentivize it. You can incentivize it, which I
What we mean?
Yeah. In exchange for this, you could do this.
Hey, should we move down to twelve?
Yes.
Okay. So C twelve, it support urban agriculture? And if we have any questions on C twelve dot one or twelve dot two?
Ms. Tobias.
Uh, twelve point two point one, support efforts for, uh, of the Thurston Food System Council. Is Tumwater Fresh part of that council, or is that a different, is it like a different organization?
I apologize, um, Thurston, not Tumwater.
Looks like it's a more regional, but I don't know what the other
Well, uh, there's the, the Tumwater Fresh program operates at Villabush Park. But I didn't know if that was like, uh, it was the Thurston Food System Council and similar organizations to develop
Yep.
I didn't know if we had, like, existing partnerships with Tumwater Fresh, with, um, Grub over in Olympia, or Flacia, similar program.
Yeah, and, and we do, and actually, that, that brings up another good point. We are getting closer to hiring somebody to prepare a food security plan. That's to, I think, help, will hopefully give us more implementation, updated urban agricultural implementation things. So just, I think that'll help us identify those specific actions and organizations that we can incorporate.
Is the primary interest there food security, food system type stuff?
It is. It, it really is, number one, ensuring that everybody in the city has access to healthy food, number one. And that books that distribution and locally sourced foods, and making sure that we don't get in the way of doing, of people wanting to do that. Is really what it comes down to. So I think that, that would, that's the intent of the plan, and how it will be developed.
And so the, so C twelve and its, and its components are primarily aimed at, at food, and not so much, say, forestry ag.
Yeah, so, you know, what we wanted, what, what we had in the original, uh, conservation element is because we didn't have, um, we don't have designated agricultural lands as set forth by the Growth Management Act, which are, which is large-scale agriculture, commercial agriculture. We do have a very strong support for the more informal urban at-level agriculture. And so we're trying to capture that here, um, in the settlement.
If anything, maybe alter the title of C twelve, support urban agriculture for food production, so that it's quite distinct from the C thirteen, support urban forestry.
I think that makes sense.
I'm moving on to C thirteen, support urban forestry. Anything under thirteen dot one or thirteen dot two?
Looking good here, I think.
Great. And then fourteen is protect mineral resource lands. We've got fourteen, one, two, and three, which are the, the last three, I believe, in the packet.
For the most part, we didn't, with the exception of adding making sure extraction doesn't cause degradation of sensitive areas, we left them unchanged.
Yeah.
All right.
Interesting that, uh, you look at it from a future development process. Many urban areas have just built over their best sources of mineral extraction. We left the secondary areas, and they're going out and destroying habitat in the county because they've covered up something that would be a great source of gravel for some housing development, or, or a Costco, or something.
Yeah.
Isn't, if, that brings up an interesting question for me about what happens, uh, when, uh, mineral resources, for all intents and purposes, really exhausted, and, uh, kind of a little bit opposite of what you're saying. We've developed over something that's still viable, could have been. But what happens when something is, you know, um, a quarry or whatever is, um, decommissioned? You know, do we have, is there, is there something here that we could beef up about the?
Well, with
Dog park is in leasing.
Yeah.
It used, used to be the dump.
Yeah, yeah.
In what, the area behind, um, in West Olympia, the area behind the grocery store? That used to be the dump there. But you, you have regulations that require people to rehabilitate those areas and make them developable
Yeah.
when they're finished.
Can we beef that up here?
Well, in, in terms of, say, for example, we, we use up all the mineral resources in the city. The county just went through a very extensive process identifying potential mineral lands within the county. And if you look at some of the maps, you can, you can go onto, you can just Google, mineral extraction Thurston County. There is a belt of properties just south of Tumwater that are sort of prime, undeveloped mineral resource land. So if the economic conditions are such that somebody says, I can make more money digging up everything, rather than putting something over the top of it, they've been identified, there's, there's probably more than sufficient amounts for things like gravel and other things out in the county. It just hasn't been economically worth it yet.
Yeah, I guess I'm talking about the, the back end, the far end, of when they have dug it all up.
Yeah. And that's where, and that's where it gets to various point, and what DNR has a reclamation permit. So essentially, they have to, anybody operating a current mine right now.
So we don't necessarily need policy
No, no. That's, that's all addressed at the state level, in terms of, you know, in, in 10 years' time, when do you expect to be, use up all your resources? And as you go, this is what you need to do to
It seems like a lost opportunity for the city to be able to say, well, we, you know, given the location of these right in the city or next to the city, you know, if they're not going to be used for mining, what, what value can we get for our
Well, the areas that are currently set aside for mining that are, like, on Black Lake Boulevard, and also in the Montman area, are all designated for industrial use.
Yeah.
So basically, and that makes probably the most sense for reuses of the property, given its location and isolation in a lot of ways from everybody else. So you could do noisier, nastier things away from people.
Often make great swimming holes.
And you can make, or you can just go down to nine oh.
Maybe they will show up in, in, in not the conservation element, but the recreation element, and the, uh, the, I don't know what the, industrial development element. Okay.
Yeah, so again, maybe we should plan a, you know, late August trip to the nine oh quarry, just to, for reclamation.
Bring a van to
Move a van. Very deep, very cold, very pleasant in the summer.
Important, sound good?
Yeah.
Good outing, they're finally reopening on the 22nd.
Okay, um, looking at the time, it's 10 of nine. I kind of think we don't have time for, um, the public purposes and utilities plans.
Yeah, I, I think we're probably not. I do encourage you, again, uh, I think I, everybody should have paper copies of everything. If not, I We're on the schedule in about a month or so to come back to that element.
Okay.
So I just encourage you, again, to, to review it. I, I think the conservation element was good in a lot of ways, because we sort of went through the processes of talking through all one of this stuff. So I, I think that will help.
Would we talk about the, um, uh, what would have, what would have been our, our eighth item at our next meeting, or after the joint meeting, or would we put it off till sometime in July?
No, it would be, it's, I can't remember when we scheduled it. It will be the, the second meeting in July, because, uh, your next meeting in June will be one hour joint discussing, uh, the development code. And also, you'll have a, a time to, or a second visit of the land use element policies. I expect I expect that the June, July ninth meeting, there will be another joint meeting with the council will be focusing on the climate element. My gut thinks that we'll probably, even after that meeting, we'll probably want to talk more. We'll have the consultant available and everything else. So my preference would be to keep that.
Okay, for July. Okay, that sounds good. Commissioner Tobias.
I, I figured we'd make it formal with a motion. I move that we reschedule the 2025 comprehensive plan periodic update for discussion for the utilities element and the lands for public purposes element to our July twenty-third planning commission meeting.
A second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. That was Commissioner Varela seconding. Thank you both. Any further discussions? All in favor of moving our 2025 comprehensive plan periodic update discussion for lands for public purposes and utilities element to July twenty-third meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we'll cover that in July, our second July meeting.
I'd, I'd like to say there is a tremendous amount of new stuff here in the conservation element. And I want to thank Alex for, you know, playing it out. It, it, it's a, it's a big step forward.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And I want to thank Brad for everything he did to help put it all together. So thank you all for your input as well. It's a huge help to have this input now and then be able to carry that forward into the future. So really appreciate it.
Very good. All right, any further discussion? Commissioner Brown.
I move that we adjourn for the evening.
Very good.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Staff seconding. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn our meeting tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. It's just amazing that it's still tied down.